And it's really, right now, it's still productive and...
Yeah.
Tom's desk. We're in habits.
That's all I can tell you.
This one needs a password.
Hey, mics are on.
Your mics are all on.
Oh, so your password.
This is the course?
Yeah. That'd be an interesting one, right?
Oh, we have to say as a minute.
Really? Right, well, I get it.
Every time.
Yeah, yeah. How funny.
No, you're fine, bro. I was just trying to stay out of the way for a minute. Don't worry, I'll do you a good doctor with you.
So if you're having fun...
I'll be right back.
Oh, sorry. Oh, school.
Good, good.
Guess where's gonna start? What's that? We're still not able to use this. The, this one?
Correct.
Oh. Can't even connect.
Oh, you know what? I'm glad you did that. I have a little sheet over here. Some people know who to put down.
Yeah.
Do you have internet?
Yep. Mine said no internet at first.
Internet possible?
Yeah, kids, are you on the city page?
This is just, you know, which one?
What was the key again?
I have to stay in there. And I think...
Mine dropped your left.
Just the stain.
And then you have to click like...
Seems easier.
Something on the webpage.
These are nice.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Partial impeachment, don't...
Yes, correct.
Is everybody ready?
No, not yet. Still fighting. Let's go right on. I just cannot...
Tell me when you're ready.
I think I'm good.
So he went to retire?
Yeah.
Oh, there we go.
Joining the meeting, did you?
I have the same paper two, three, four times.
You're walking.
Five times.
Go to meetings. Are you on?
I got the...
Yeah, yeah.
Are you guys both ready?
I am now.
Okay. All right, it is 7:31, and I will call this meeting to order. Will you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is, roll call, please.
Mayor Terry Wykum.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jacqueline Wells.
Here.
Councilmember Aaron Durst.
Here.
Councilmember Darryl Gardner.
Here.
Councilmember Davari Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Linda Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Weisenberg.
Here.
Thank you.
All righty, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is to approve the agenda. Vice Mayor Wells?
I move to approve the January 3, 2023, City Council Agenda as amended.
Second.
And a motion made and seconded to approve the January 3, 2023, City Council Agenda as amended. Is there any discussion?
Just to double check, the amendment was adding the Dirty Boys to it for the... Okay, perfect, just double checking.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Can we have one more night of online yelling? Yes.
Am I the only one? It's not coming through. I, I?
Online voting has closed, the motion passes with seven yeas.
All right, thank you. Next thing on the agenda is to approve a set of minutes for December 20. Councilman Martinez?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the minutes of December 20, 2022, as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of December 20, 2022, as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Online voting has closed, the motion passes with seven yeas.
All right, thank you. At this time, I will open a public hearing. This public hearing is for, it's a second public hearing, for submission of a community development block grant for repairs and replacing, and replacement to the transmission line. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to that subject at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. The next thing on our agenda, next item, is a second public hearing on submission of a community development block grants for the SCADA system submitted for $962,951.14. Jeez. Is there any discussion at this time? Does anybody want to say anything during this public hearing?
I just have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What is it going to be used for?
This one is for the, it's called the SCADA system. It's basically everything that controls the water system, the computer system, the valves, the tank levels, such like that. Is there any further discussion? All right, please open online voting.
No, it's just a hearing. We're just closing the hearing.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. It's a public hearing. I will close that public hearing, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is citizens' participation. This is a time set aside by Resolution Number 2C-96. It's, it allot five-minute time for citizens to discuss anything that is not on the current agenda. So is there anybody here that would like to speak?
Can you just print your name on that?
Sure.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Yeah, say, say your name and then also write it down because they're having a hard time with the spelling of some of the names.
Sure. So it's Austin Thomas, and I just wanted to give you a quick update. We are doing, we're doing meetings, and we're going to meet, hopefully with the city on Tuesday to try to get the committee organized. We have some really great ideas for the water and for the Glen in general. We've actually gotten a lot more of the owners to participate, which is great. And then we had some ideas that we were going to go over with them, like for compost, and hopefully on January 10, we can come together and get organized for moving forward with it. But I wanted to thank you guys for working with us. And then also to give you a quick update. I know we didn't get the January bill lowered yet, but I'm hoping we can maybe get that lowered soon, like maybe March, before March, depending on what we can come together on. But that's all I had. I just wanted to let everybody know that petitioners for the Glen are working together to form a committee. So we've gotten way more people involved now. And even though they're not part of the original petitioner, they're more than willing to come together for a committee-type group.
Thank you. Appreciate your hard work at that.
Hi, guys.
Mayor. Kelly Brent, how you guys doing?
Good.
So what I got on my mind is, take some of the things that we have around town, some equipment we have around town. When you guys are going to vote on something, on a piece of equipment, a truck or whatever, I think you really need to discuss it with your ward, your people that's in your ward, right? Have a discussion with them. If you're going to make a decision on something, I think you need to get the public more involved in what you're doing and stuff, you know, because there's just too much hateful out there, right? And we want to get rid of it, right? We agree? So the way, one of the ways of doing that is putting the public together, going down, you know, wherever we need to go and meet with, with the public and ask questions. What do you think? This is what they got. Should we do it, or should we do it? And that's what we need to be talking about and stuff. And, and like the revenue stuff, you know? We have a golf course, I'm pretty sure it's not making revenue and stuff. One thing, what we could do there is lease that golf course. Lease it out to somebody, make some revenue off of it. And there's, there's plenty of ways of doing that. And I can help out on that, too. That's what I got.
Well, thank you.
Yep.
Can I ask you to print your name and stuff on that piece of paper, please?
Brent?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I can only write.
Put your glasses on. Thank you.
I got somebody's name on it. Counsel, Mayor, Joe Garcia.
Can I have your name, please, printed? Thank you, I appreciate it.
As you guys know, I always come here complaining about Chapter 8 on air-lit vehicles. But I'm here to give a little bit of honor to Councilmember Davari. So even though we're on the wrong side of the issue, he's always been helpful. So going to be a great loss of knowledge from both of yous. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
You guys have a great retirement?
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to have to comment on the vote coming up for the renewal licenses?
No, it's on the agenda.
So it's on the agenda?
Right, there'll be, there'll be a time then you can comment.
You'll need to print your name.
Turn it on?
Nope, that's on. You'll need to print your name on the piece of paper and save it for later, please.
I'm Tanya Lumen. First, I would like to deeply thank all those who voted against me, or for me. Second, I want to apologize. Do realize I'm very new to this election process. For the election, I only took one donation. In the last month of the election, Rose Kane offered to help. She said to go by the office, Dirty Boys, and pick up a check. I went by the office where I was handed a check that I believe to be a personal check, signed the back, deposited in my account. I was mistakenly handed the wrong check. On the sheet regarding donations, I put where I went, to Dirty Boys, to get the check. My opponent's daughter requested an investigation. Unknown to me, the check was from Dirty Boys Corporation and not Rose Kane's personal account. When I discovered this mistake, I returned the entire amount. I should have paid more attention to the account the check was from. Even though this was a very human mistake, the law is not merciful nor caring, and many laws are in place to keep ordinary people from holding any office in government. I'm a single woman of modest means and cannot afford a lawyer to determine what the word knowingly means. It appears this process will take months before a conclusion is reached. A city lawyer and judge called me on Friday, stated that until this matter is settled, I cannot say the oath of office, nor beyond the council. The city lawyer then sent me an email this morning defining perjury and saying it was up to me whether or not I take the oath. Now, if you speak lawyer, you know, this is a way to say that if you take the oath and are charged by your opponent with perjury, we are not in any way responsible. Others may have lawyers in their back pocket, I do not. The council can then put my opponent, who the people overwhelmingly voted against, back in office. I wanted to be on the council because the people in Rawlins, especially those who work for the city, are friendly, hopeful, determined, generous, energetic, full of grit and grace. City workers deserve to be spoken to with respect and without threat. The city deserves water, safe roads, trash removal, and ethics policy. But this has given me the opportunity to look at the council. The majority do not represent Rawlins. They're depressed, rude, bitter, angry, discouraged, destroyed, and exhausted. And sitting on the council changes people, mostly for the worst. Perhaps God has a different direction. A note on Facebook. For those who support me, do not bother to defend against slanderous or conspiracy theories or things people will say. This was my mistake, and I am sure that all those who call me names have never made a mistake in all their life, bless their hearts. Besides, there are other items to discuss, like trash pickup, snow removal, the mayor being voted back into his position, my opponent being back into hers. However, or, we could use Facebook to talk about all the wonderful people who have been getting people out of the snow and shoveling their driveways and shoveling their walks. The trash people who are going to walk through two feet of snow to get your trash in the alleyways that aren't allowed. The great stores we have here, Windswept Goods and Geeshish Things, and the amazing number of volunteers that do great work in the city. Again, thank you so much for your votes. And I apologize for my ignorance and for letting you down. But as they say, no good deed goes unpunished.
All right, is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Yes.
Hi, we're Mike and Ruth Perry, and we own the Brickyard Inn Motel here in town. And we just wanted to speak in favor of Dirty Boys as being a contractor here for the garbage pickup. We've been in business for seven years, and we have...
Ma'am, I'm, I'm sorry, but if this is about Dirty Boys, you'll have to wait till that agenda item comes up. Because public comment is for anything that is not on the agenda. I apologize.
Well, I'm sorry, too.
No worries. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Hello, I'm Samantha Weber, and I just have a few things for right now. The first one is, is that whenever we had our meeting with the interim city manager on December 16, which I haven't recorded, he said that the bill, the water bill down at the Glen was going to be $75. There was no credits and no reduction. Then in turn, it was reversed and said, no, he didn't say that. Well, I've got the whole meeting on tape, and I don't... If, if you can't keep your facts straight, be honest. Because if not, the truth's going to come back and bite you right in your rear end. So the second thing that I have is that Bigfoot 99 played Mr. Weisenberg's comment from the meeting last night. And he said that it was all his research and investigation for the trash situation. He's incorrect. It was him and Sean McCaff. It was not just him. So that was a blatant lie. And I've got the Facebook message right here that shows that it was Sean McCaff and you. That is it.
Yeah, please.
Okay.
Is there anybody else that would like to say something? About something that is not on the agenda?
Is council members on the agenda?
No.
Or, so that could be spoken about?
Great, I'm just...
I'm disappointed about, to hear about...
Can I have your name?
Oh, Mike, last name is Goff. Disappointed to hear about the Tanya Lumen situation, because I was excited to see new faces on the board. I believe that the town has spoken. I, I think a lot of people are tired of what's gone on for years, kicking the can down the road, so to speak. I believe that Chris and Terry, council members, sorry, and Mayor, I believe you set a precedent when you stepped out once before, and have not stepped out since then. Talking about something that another council member has every single time either stepped out or been asked to step out. I think if you did it once, you should continue to do it. As other people have mentioned, there's been lies about money and saying certain dollar amounts, which to individuals in this town is extremely frustrating, especially since we count on you to make decisions for this city. Now, I'm not saying the entire council. Unfortunately, you all get picked on as a whole, but you have turned this town into the laughingstock of this state.
Absolutely.
Does not come just from this state. I've heard from people in surrounding states. What in the F is going on with your city council? Now, I look at you, Terry, Mr. Mayor. You're the one in charge. You haven't stepped down, and in my opinion, you should have.
Yes.
Because you're the one in charge. When a football team does horrible, who's the first person to get fired?
Coach.
I don't know who's speaking up back there, but you'll have your chance to come up and take the podium, and we don't do the cheerleading thing here, so, please, Mike, continue.
I, I think this is absolutely terrible. I'm, I haven't lived here. I, I moved here in 15. I've enjoyed living in this town. Town has its issues, every single town does, especially small towns. We've got people that have been on the board for a number of years, and this year, lost their seats. I think people are starting to notice, and people are starting to pay attention. People are taking notes, people are, are keeping receipts for what's going on and what people are saying, whether it's making fun of somebody on Facebook, or telling people where somebody lives on Facebook, which in my opinion, I don't know where the hell morals stand if they're gonna do that and still stay on a city council board. To me, that is asinine. You guys represent our city and make the decisions for our city. Do better, be better. We want a choice. We'd like to remove somebody who wasn't doing the right thing, but you've told us we can't. The only way we can is voting somebody out. And it's happened. Thank you. Thank you. By the way, I'm the one that walks through the two feet of snow.
Who's next?
I'm Denise Ashline. I'm gonna write that down, but I've attended several city council meetings recently, and listened to several online. Actually, over the last couple days, I've watched several and listened to several. I'm appalled at the way that the current mayor has treated other members of the city council and the members of the audience. I was at a special meeting with the audience, was rudely reprimanded for clapping when they agreed with something that someone said. No one from the audience was allowed to comment because it was a special meeting. As elected officials, you are responsible to serve the people who elected you. I feel that the current mayor has a vendetta against one of our current haulers, and is conducting himself in a very unprofessional manner. Mayor Wykem and Councilman Weisenberg were advised by the city attorney that they, if they were unable to set aside bias and make an impartial decision when it comes to the matter of that hauler, then they should not be, if they couldn't make an impartial decision, that they shouldn't be voting on the matters there. Mayor Wykem stated last night, statements last night, in the special emergency meeting that nobody had any notice of, except for five minutes ahead of time, were definitely not unbiased. Please consider a change of leadership for next year. I would like to see Vice Mayor Wells as the mayor, and Councilman Garner as the vice mayor, or vice versa. We need to have people that have proven themselves to stand up for the people in this community in charge, and have somebody that is listening and treating people with respect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Wykem, councilmembers, my name is Casey Schinkel, a resident of Rawlins. I do not live in Linda Smith's ward. However, I would like to know what the process is on, will her position remain vacant until there's a special election, or will she be reappointed tonight? Based on Tanya not taking the oath, the city code is not clear. Section 204040, determination of vacancy in elected office, vacancy as an elected office within the city, shall be determined to exist at such time as the, as the council by motion finds that the incumbent dies, resigns, is determined by a court having jurisdiction to be insane, or mentally incompetent, is disqualified for holding, from holding office for any reason specified by law, is convicted of a crime involving moral turpitude or constituting a breach of his oath of office, refuses to take the oath of office, refuses to give or renew an official bond if required by law, the election is voided by a court decision, or no longer resides within the ward from which he/she was elected. So, it's not clear what the next step in that is, and I know the voters spoke and they outvoted Linda. I don't think she deserves to sit on the bench again for another term. So, what is the next step with that?
We, we don't answer questions with citizens' participation, but on this case, I will try. First of all, it's not really up to the city, it's a state law that, that was in question with Tanya's thing, and so therefore, it's gonna be determined by the state as to what the next steps are.
Okay, so will Linda take the oath of office tonight, then?
I can't answer that.
Okay. Thank you.
Patrick Gonzalez. To answer Casey's question, approximately six years ago, one of the council people stepped down. So, you had a vacancy. Myself, Steve Sanger, and five other people, the city actually put out a public notice that anyone interested in wanting to sit on the city council was to fill out a form, return it to the city clerk, and then there was a special meeting that those seven individuals came out, excuse me, and were interviewed by all the members of council. Then they had a, essentially, an executive session, and they voted on who they were going to decide was going to fill that position. That was the precedent then, it should be the precedent now. So, I just thought I'd let you know that. Dubari was sitting on this council when that did happen, so there is a process, so I hope they follow that process correctly.
All right, who's next? Yeah, would you please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To clarify, the two situations between Mr. Casey Schinkel's question and Mr. Patrick Gonzalez's response are two separate types of situations. The one that we find ourselves in is a vacancy at the beginning, that with no one having been sworn in and no one taking the seat. That is ruled by statutory law. The Secretary of State will have to ratify the next person who comes into the, to the seat, based on votes. The one that Mr. Gonzalez was discussing was a midterm vacancy, which is ruled by our ordinances and does proceed the way that he explained it. That is the difference between the two.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
I forgot to mention this earlier. I just wanted to give a huge shout out to everybody who's been clearing snow, clearing roads, and helping dig out driveways, drinking out sidewalks, clearing sidewalks. I think the city and, and Masquerading, and a few other people have done an amazing job of clearing it. And then, if you guys, like, are there gonna be any more raven kills? Did we decide to use, like, ultrasonics, or anything to stop the dead birds?
You would have to ask the USDA, really, 'cause they're the, they're the party that actually does that.
'Cause they said it was up to the person who had the, I called them, and they said it was, 'cause you guys still have a permit, so...
Well, I think it's a collaborative effort, but they are the actual ones that do that, so I personally can't, none of us can answer that question.
And then, also, I just wanted to mention that the CCGA, which is the Citizens Committee for the Glen Edition, has come up with some, there's a private group that's helping with pay the, the water bill down there for people who can't afford it. So, if anybody does need help paying it, just get hold of us. They're doing it anonymous, anonymously, so you don't have to worry about, you know, your neighbors or anything like that. They do it all literally by lot numbers, so it's not anybody's personal info. But, that's all, I just want to add that we do have that, and to thank them for clearing the snow.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next thing on the agenda, which is the city manager report and staff reports. Turn it over to you, Tom.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Madam Vice, members of the council. To start tonight, I'd like to invite Austin Gilbert to come forward. He has an update. He has an update for us on the pretreatment plant and the roads.
City Council, Honorable Mayor, thank you for hearing out your staff tonight. Looking at the current situation, our crews are working in 12-hour shifts, trying to get as much of the snow off the streets as quickly as possible, looking in different ways to use equipment that isn't normally used, to get as many people out on the streets, getting the work done as quickly as possible. So, they are working very hard. With that, I would like to discuss something regarding the pretreatment plant tonight. And in that pretreatment plant process, we've gone through and identified a couple of places where improvements can be done to the existing facility. This is where we're looking at river water being used for culinary purposes this upcoming season, so we will be using it for drinking water effectively and for irrigation. This will supplement our spring water. To do this, we've got to bring this plant back up to snuff. I don't know if it ever was up to snuff, but it has a number of leaks in the basins. And the basins leak is, the leaks aren't large enough to allow sand to come through the actual structure and come into the area the workers are, are working. Then, where those leaks are in the basins, those cracks, that, that water will actually flow down into these floor drains. And then the floor drains, they fill with sand, but if they don't fill with sand, all that water then goes, it's the design that we have, goes down to our septic system at the water treatment plant. And then it inundates the septic system, and then eventually, at some point, it's going to flood that tank and then destroy the leach field that is out there. And so, once you have solids leave a, a septic tank and go into a leach field, it, it's basically, needs to be completely rebuilt. And so, there will be a potential cost there. So, in the interim, we've gone and got quotes from two contractors for the three different phases of the work in those basins. We have Clean Pipe, it was one company, and then we have High Desert Renovations as well. And they've gone through and provided us quotes for the cleaning, for the sandblasting of the coatings that are in the basins, all ready to remove those off the wall. They're halfway removed, we power wash them, and it's, it's scaled pretty dramatically. So, I'm sorry, I'm a little distracted. I have a little bit of a hearing issue. So, but with that... I'm sorry, this is gonna take me a moment. Yeah, okay, High Desert Renovations, thank you. So, with High Desert Renovations, they've effectively provided us the lowest quote for the three different steps, the cleaning, the sandblasting, and then also for the coatings in these basins. The coatings in the basins also will include a crack fill, which will ultimately, hopefully, stop the majority of these leaks that are going down into our drains. So, it's an option that we have, and I'd like to present this to you as an option in our process. The contractor is ready to go, the one with the lowest quotes for the three different processes. It's approximately, it's about $50,000 right now. I'd have my computer up and running right now, but I'm having trouble with the network with the exact numbers, and I couldn't print on the network, sorry. But, it's, it's in that ballpark. And then the, the cost is one where, you know, obviously, we're not going to be, we're not gonna allow this to flow to the, the septic tank. We will have people out there, if we have to, at the manhole, or create some kind of siphon, or, or a pump that's right there at the floor drains to prevent it from overrunning the septic tank into the leach field. So, it's really a question of, do we want to have our crews trying to maintain those leaks and stopping those flows from going down to the floor drains while they're trying to start the pretreatment plan up? Or do we want to try and nip it in the bud now and catch it now? And finally, I've got a third option, and that is to come in in April, after we've done the wet run and the automated run, and allow a contractor to come in and drill 20 inches on center on both the atmosphere side and the basin side of the walls, and do a polyurethane injection. I don't have costs for this, but I would imagine it's well over $100,000 to have that done. I believe it's an issue, what we've talked about, Y2 Consultants and I have looked at, and we believe it's an issue with the water stops when the concrete foundations were, were poured. So, it's, it's kind of a tough call, you know? Y2 Consultants, they're recommending that we not pursue the coatings, that we not pursue the crack fill. They would like us to do the wet run and see if we can try to maintain the leaks inside the work area. But, from my staff recommendation that I have for you tonight, I believe it's important for the overall process to try and prevent as many issues in advance that we can prior to doing these wet runs, to try and get this problem fixed, if we can. There's no guarantee that this will work, but I believe that it's the best shot that we have right now, prior to our mid-January wet run. And I'd just like to open it up to you to see what your thoughts are, and what your questions are, and which direction you'd like to go with this.
Councilman's mayor?
Austin, I have two thoughts, I guess. Y2 told us the last time they presented their report, I think about a month ago... Y2 told us the last time they presented their report, I think about a month ago, that we would still have water restrictions even this summer because they would not have all of this brought back up to where we could just go turn it on and be normal with our watering. So, if you were to do all of the preventive steps that you're proposing, will that help us get over that hump? Or can you give us a little bit of insight into whether we should go ahead and do this and then?
We do have the water right. To be able to pull from the river, we're gonna maximize that. We're gonna take as much as we can on our right to turn effectively into culinary water, to treat, to become culinary water. This process has its limitations, and our plant, our treatment plant is not designed to handle, the filtration plant is just simply not designed to handle raw river water. And the most that we can produce, I believe, is around 950 gallons per minute.
River water.
Of river water that can then be treated at the water treatment plant. So, it will hopefully get us an additional day for this upcoming irrigation season. We're doing everything we can to get that to happen, but I don't know, I would say that if, by spending this, you may reduce your risk in your timeline. It may help us get ahead of an issue that may become a greater issue later. So, it's a hard, it's a hard call.
I remember the Y2 folks, well, actually, it's been talked about several times, these leaks. And for the 50,000, as far as I'm concerned, I think we ought to fix them now, be preemptive. So, there isn't, there's only so many fingers to go in the dyke, I guess, is what I'm saying. And so, when this thing starts, it's gonna be hectic enough without having that additional work and worry. And I'm just going by what I've been told. I mean, I'm no engineer or whatever, but that's, I think we ought to do something about it now, not later. Councilman Garner.
The, on that third option, was it the polyurethane?
Yep, polyurethane injection.
Is that option guarantee it stops the leaks? Or is this also maybe as well?
It's a much higher likelihood, because with the polyurethane injection, you have the ability, it handles movements and the structure and things like that better than the polyurethane crack fill that we're proposing.
And you said you would like to do, you would do the wet run and then handle this one down the road after they do the test? That's what they were recommending?
So, Y2 Consultants is recommending that we would wait on doing an improvement to the structure until after we've done the automated run and to move forward with a polyurethane injection after the fact.
Okay.
That's the recommendation from Y2 Consultants. And so, my recommendation is contrary to that recommendation.
Okay. And you want to go with the first option and then move forward from there?
Yeah, and it still may be a combination of both.
Okay.
Yeah.
And with that 1.3 million, if we have the plant running, we can still bring, are we gonna be bringing any water in from the springs at the same time?
Absolutely.
The combination of the two?
Yes, yeah.
What, I can't remember, what's, what was the rate in June or July for just what we had this summer? Do you remember?
I believe it was 1.5 MGD.
So, this will put us about 2.8 roughly?
2.5, 2.8.
Okay.
Yeah.
2.5 to 2.8?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
It depends. We just got a lot of snow. So, the snow tell just read that we had 46 inches of snow. That's right at the springs, and, you know, I think, I believe it's 54 inches is a good year at the snow tell, so that's a good thing.
Vice Mayor Wells.
I, I believe we do need to do something sooner rather than later. I don't know which option is better, but I would leave that up to our staff to figure that out.
Okay. Councilman Weisenberg.
So, the recommendation, Y2K wants to run a wet run on it. The staff believes to fix it first, so it's contradicting. Is, the reason is because of lack of staff there and not enough to maintain why they're trying to do the wet run?
It's, it's part of it, is the issue is just having a lack of staff and then just trying to focus on getting a good product out to the public at the same time. So, trying to start a new process that's never been really run properly in the past and what other, you know, barriers are you gonna have in the way of you accomplishing that?
I'd also agree then, do some kind of fix prior to the wet run if we can, so we don't have to pull resources from somewhere else as we're, you know, we don't have the, we have limited staff as it is now. We're dealing with other things. I mean, we get another snowstorm or something like that, we can't just pull people from other departments, so I think we should possibly try and fix what we can at this point in time.
Okay. And then, for clarification too, I'd also like to provide to you that these quotes, each quote does not exceed the statutory limit of $35,000 and that each phasing was split out and they bid, or they quote on each phase. So, it's not just one giant lump sum, so to speak. It's not total, it's a total overall, but each one is quoted.
I wouldn't mind having a solid estimate on the other option, because I'm a little bit familiar with that. We had buildings at the county that were leaking, and they drilled through the walls and injected, I believe it's very similar product and whatnot, with super high success. I would like to have a solid estimate on that process also.
Okay.
Because I, I do think it has a higher probability of fixing the problem.
Would you rather do that in lieu of the first option?
Well, it depends on the money, 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 you know?
Right.
Depends on what the estimate would come back.
Yeah, it's tough, because right now, we've effectively got a two-week window before we do our first wet run. And I don't know that we'll be able to get a
I doubt it.
Good estimate in that amount of time and to be able to give the contractor notice to start moving.
Well, then it gets back to staff recommendations from there.
Okay, okay. All right, great.
Councilman Weisenberg.
What's the total volume projected to be used during the hottest months of the summer? So, I mean, we got a lot of citizens here. We know we're looking at about 2.5, 2.8 with the pretreatment running and the springs running right now. I just want, so, so they can understand here the kind of an urgency of what's happening here, why we're
Right.
Going to another phase on the project.
Right. So, effectively, on a really high-demand month, you can expect almost 6 million gallons a day use, which is half of Cheyenne's. At about 12 MGD. So, it's pretty shocking, the amount of water that's used in the summer.
Thank you. Councilman Martinez.
Are you gonna bring this to us in a form of a bid on both these contractors, or you're just gonna make a decision that, what you're presenting now and we have to make a decision, or the next council will be making a decision on that?
Well, it's effectively quotes that were provided and not a bid process. And your standard statutory bid process would be for projects over $35,000 for each.
Will they be coming before the next council to explain to them what they're gonna do or who's gonna do it?
I can wait on that if it's the council's pleasure. I'm open to anything.
Well, a lot of times, you get to talking about things that are way out of our, at least myself, I'm not familiar with that kind of work. I'm more interested in how much it's gonna cost us and how you went about selecting a particular contractor. But, that's just me and I won't be here, so I just wanted to throw that out.
Yes, yeah. So, the High Desert Renovations bid for cleaning of the basins was $8,500. They've completed that work already. It was a quote. And then, with the second quote that we have from High Desert Renovations, it's a cost of $34,988 for the coatings, which is very close to the statutory limit, so we cannot exceed that amount. And then, for the final, which is the sandblasting, which would go prior to that, you can expect on their quote it to be $18,495, uh, $18,495, excuse me.
I still think that the sooner the better.
Okay.
That we ought to get this work going.
Okay.
I was just curious as to how, how we decide which, which company we're gonna use and the amount of money that they need.
Yeah, the quotes that I received from the other contractor were substantially higher by orders of magnitude, almost.
Councilman Smith.
Austin, I would say to you, I wouldn't, I'm not hung up on the amount so much as what you feel is the best method to, to fix the issue. So, that's where I'm coming from.
Okay. If it was my house, I would move forward with the coatings and do the crack fill, and if I had to, I'd come back later and do the polyurethane injection. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Austin, would you touch on real quick the tank levels during the wet run? What would be the impact?
Absolutely. That was something I did want to speak about. So, in this wet run, we actually have to draw down our tank levels. Our current storage, we're drawing down to 40%. So, we're getting down to about 10 feet on our tank farm. And the reason we have to do this is so that when we do the wet run, that when we produce all of this culinary water, it has to have a place to go. Otherwise, we're gonna be flooding the creeks all the way from the water treatment plant down to the Platte River. And so, it would be better to, to use that water and store, store water that we're receiving now, instead of using it to fill our tanks, store that water in our reservoirs and then be in a much better position later. So, it is a little scary, getting down to 40% on those tanks. I'll be honest with you.
We've been worse.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Austin. I've got a couple of things tonight. First off, the last council meeting, we approved the depositories at the banks, the financial institutions. And I know there was some question about the bank accounts and which ones we had at which bank. And so, I have prepared a schedule for you, and there are some on the table in the back for the public if they'd like to, to see it. So, anyway, you can see the two banks that we approved, and we are roughly 14 million in each of those banks. The Bank of the West, we are well under the $250,000 FDIC insurance on that. And the Wild Star is with the state of Wyoming. It's just a, basically a money market account that the state holds that we could get a little more interest with. So, so anyway, I will try to incorporate this each month into the financial statements that I issue, where it is not in there currently, but I will incorporate these balances. One other thing to note about that is we have 23 different accounts in here, and I will, I will bring a proposal explanation. I'd like to get that down to about seven to eight different bank accounts. I think that's all that is really necessary to account. I think each time something new comes up, we open a new bank account and put the funds in. There is a way to account for all of this money other than separate bank accounts, and so I will put that on my priority list to, to bring a report to council to show how we can get that down by using repurchase accounts, zero balance accounts, and all the different banking services that they have, so. Secondly, the, the next round of the ARPA grants are, is due towards the end of January, and these are towards water infrastructure. So, we do have a project that we have defined, and we are working on that application. It is a point system like it was with the second ARPA grant, and we have gone through that point system to make sure that we can maximize the number of points that we get. One of the items in there is the city match to the grant. So, we are looking at a, at a grant up at the springs, which would include Sage Creek and the Beaver Creek Basin. And right now, what, what we have defined is about $2.8 million worth of a project. To maximize the amount of points, we would have to match that over 50% or basically at 51%. And that would be 1.4 million of a match versus 1.4 million that we would ask for as the grant. That would come to that 2.8. We have in Impact Assistance Fund about $717,000 for water line infrastructure. So, we can utilize that as part of the match. So, if we were to match it at 1.4 million, we would have to, to appropriate about $700,000 of general fund cash reserves towards that project, okay? The second level of that would be 36% of a match, and that would lower the amount that we would have to put as a match to about 250,000 roughly. And, and we would lose one point in the overall formula. And so, we are weighing out which one, you know, would best fit our interest, and we will have a, a recommendation based on that for the council at the next, next council meeting. We would not have to amend the current year budget since the actual expenditure of these funds would be next fiscal year. So, it would have to go into next year's budget or even the following year, depending on the cash flow of that. So, anyway, we will have a recommendation based upon that for you at the next council meeting. I, I wanna give a shout out to all the streets crews and all the city employees, just for the amazing effort, you know, that, that has happened with this recent weather event. It's just amazing how everybody has stepped up. We haven't heard any complaints or anything. I mean, they've just really stepped up and just done a wonderful job. We wanna thank the residents that adhered to the travel advisory, that were not out on the streets and that allowed the street crews to get out and to clear the streets. We really appreciate those residents that have helped and especially those that have helped their, their neighbors and, and all of that. This is, this is just a wonderful town. This scene, for, you know, what I've seen over the last couple of days, really amazing. I think we really have a special place here in Rollins and tremendous people here, so, so thank you.
Councilman Weisenberg.
Then, Councilman Weisenberg?
The seven-fifty cash reserves, you know, out of the cash reserves, we're talking one-point-four. The excess amount of that's coming out of the impact assistance, correct? That's already been allocated on the last grant that was denied.
Correct. And so that was opened back up again that we could put it towards this one.
Thank you.
Councilman Smith?
My advice would be go for broke. Do whatever you have to do to get those points up because we really need the ARPA money.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Next thing on our agenda is city attorney report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. I have nothing to report at this time.
All right. Thank you. Uh, next thing on our agenda is to untable the Wyoming Waste Connections Holler's License. Vice Mayor Wells has her hand up.
I move to untable the Wyoming Waste Connections Inc. Municipal Solid Waste Holler License that was tabled at the City of Rollins Regular Council Meeting on December twentieth, twenty-twenty-two.
Yes, sir. There's been a motion made and seconded to untable the Wyoming Waste Connections Inc. Municipal Solid Waste Holler License that was tabled at the City of Rollins Regular Council Meeting on December twentieth, twenty-twenty-two. Is there any discussion?
Need clarification. Wendy?
Yes.
On these, I can stay for these two items, but I need to excuse myself for Dirty Boys, correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Hey, please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Yes.
Online voting has closed. The motion passes with seven yays.
All right. Thank you. Uh, next thing on our agenda is, uh, Councilman Smith?
Yes, I move to approve Wyoming Waste Connections Inc. Municipal Solid Waste Holler License retroactively for the period of January first, two thousand twenty-three through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Okay.
Do I hear a second? Been a motion made and seconded to approve Wyoming Waste Connection Inc. Municipal Solid Waste Holler License retroactively for the period of January first, two thousand twenty-three through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Is there any discussion? See?
Should that be two thousand twenty? It is two thousand twenty-three. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion?
I have to look.
Um, yeah. Do you want to say something, Wendy?
I do. I just want to let the council know, based on the agreements made last night, we have secured the written and signed agreement between Wyoming Waste and the City of Rollins. Not only that they agree that they will abide by section eight-point-zero-eight in order to ensure that their license is renewed, they are also fully in compliance and have also agreed to repay the amounts that were overcharged in two thousand twenty-one in the amount of two-thousand thirty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents. And they have signed that agreement as well.
See, thank you. Any further discussion? Please open online voting.
Yes.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. The motion passes with seven yays.
All right. Thank you. Next thing on our agenda is the Dirty Boys. Councilman Smith?
I move to approve Dirty Boys Sanitation Services, Inc. Municipal Solid Waste Holler License retroactively for the period of January first, two thousand twenty-three through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve Dirty Boys Sanitation Services, Inc. Municipal Solid Waste Holler License retroactively from the period of January first, two thousand twenty-three through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Is there any discussion? And Wendy?
Again, sir, as agreed last night, we do have a signed agreement from Dirty Boys regarding both the, following the ordinance and paying amounts that are attached to the document in the amount of five-thousand-three-hundred-ninety dollars in fees that were offset. And those, that five-thousand-three-hundred-ninety will be subject to a credit for the current materials that are being held in the Dirty Boys compound. So that five thousand will be offset by the amount that they've been holding on their property.
Any further discussion? Amy?
Just have one clarification request for the council. The motion was to retroactively approve that license. The council at their emergency meeting last night granted a temporary license. The motion tonight is for this council to take action for January third through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. You're not ratifying that temporary. Both, both, both hollers were effectively, their licenses expired December thirty-first at midnight. And then last night, you provided a temporary license. So I would ask that the council consider amending the agenda, or amending your motion to specifically identify that you are approving the license period beginning today through December thirty-first. Thank you.
I so, I amend the motion to read.
I'll second that.
As stated.
So the motion will be to approve Dirty Boys Sanitation Services, Inc. Municipal Solid Waste Holler License for the period of January third, two thousand twenty-three through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Is that correct, Amy?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Please open online voting.
Hold on one moment. Okay, online voting is open.
Yes.
Online voting has closed. The motion passes with six yays and one not present. The one not present with Councilmember Gardner.
And your honor, I'm sorry, your honorable mayor. He's, I'm used to being in court. Just for the sake of clarity, I would request that the council go back and remove for the same amendment to the motion for Wyoming Waste as well. That way, everybody's on the same time scale and the motions match.
Okay, so what do we have to do to view that?
So if, we can request to amend the prior motion and re-vote on the new motion.
Okay. Who, who made that motion?
I made the motion, but I have a legal question.
Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Durst seconded.
Um, no, I lost my train of thought. But it was, um, we did not actually vote. We just had a consensus last night as to granting those extensions. So aren't we more proper just doing timelines rather than amending? I think.
A new, a new motion would be appropriate as well.
Okay, because I was thinking we, we did it okay for Wyoming Waste. But this was a little bit different because we did not vote on it last night. We just need to ratify that for three days or else just retroactively do it.
I, I understand what you're saying now. No, ma'am, we can't have them, either one of them, starting on January first. They both have to have the same starting date because they're both being voted on on the same date.
Okay.
Um, I'm sorry, I misunderstood you the first time.
Yeah, I was just worried about the three-day interim.
No, ma'am.
Because they weren't really the same, but, okay, thank you.
So we need a new motion?
Yes, sir.
Hold new motion or an amendment?
You can do a friendly amendment and vote on the friendly amendment if everyone is.
I would.
Sorry, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Gardner needs to come back.
To item seven B?
To change Wyoming Waste.
Yes.
Yes. And I'd still make that motion, Mayor, after he gets in.
We have to amend Wyoming Waste's motion, so.
So, Councilman Gardner, what happened was the motion read that we retroactively for the period of January first gave approval to this contract to Wyoming Waste when in fact it needs to start on January third today. So the motion that will be voting on is to approve Wyoming Waste Connections, Inc. Municipal Solid Waste Holler License for the period of January third, two thousand twenty-three through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three is what the motion is and has been seconded.
Okay.
Yeah. You have questions? Gardner, Councilmember Gardner, you have questions about that?
Okay. I'm not, I, just for formality, I don't know if we're on a new motion, but if, if we're friendly amended, I will second the friendly amendment. Or if we still need, because I don't know if we actually formally seconded, I will still second the new motion. Whatever needs to be done, I just want to make sure we had a second.
I thought that Vice Mayor Wells seconded it. Or did you friendly amend it?
She's in the peripheral.
I'm good with him.
I just wanted to make sure there was a second, that's all.
Yeah, I think she did.
It was him.
It was Councilmember Durst who seconded the original one.
And so I, I second the, the friendly amendment.
Thank you, Councilman.
Or I second the new motion, however it's being.
It gets confusing.
Is there any further discussion? All right, thank you. Please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Yes.
Online voting has closed. The motion passes with seven yays.
All right. The next thing on our agenda is to approve some executive session minutes. And first one will be November first. Do I have a motion?
I'd move to approve. I'd move to approve executive session minutes of November first, two thousand twenty-two, regular council meeting.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve the executive minutes of November first, two thousand twenty-two, regular council meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Yeah. Um, Wendy?
Yes.
Abstain on partials, right?
Yes.
I messed up. I'm sorry.
Top right.
Oh, thank you.
No.
Nay.
Nay.
So online voting has closed. The motion passed, the motion fails. The yays were Councilmember Martinez, Councilmember, Councilmember Weisenberg and Mayor Wycombe. The nay was Councilmember Durst. The abstain was Vice Mayor Wells. Count, yeah, Councilmember Gardner and Councilmember Smith.
All right. So let's move to the next one, which is executive minutes for November fifteenth. Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Wells?
I move to approve executive session minutes of November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, special council meeting.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve the executive minutes of, uh, executive session minutes of November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, special council meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Yes.
Online voting has closed. The motion passes with six yays and one nay. And the one nay was Councilmember Gardner.
All right. So the next thing on our agenda is to approve executive minutes, Vice Mayor Wells?
I'm.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I messed up my vote. I needed to abstain on that one.
It was supposed to be an abstention, not a nay.
Okay.
Sorry, I just clicked off to the side. Getting all confused. You're welcome.
Do you need to reboot? Vice Mayor?
We would need to reboot on that one, sir.
Okay. So we'll go back to the executive minutes of November eighteenth, special council meeting. It was, the motion was made by Vice Mayor Wells, seconded by Councilman Weisenberg. Is there any discussion? All right. Please open online voting.
Okay, so online voting has opened.
Yes.
Online voting has closed. The motion passes with six yays and one abstain. The one abstain was Councilmember Gardner.
All right. Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is executive minutes of December sixth, Vice Mayor Wells?
I move to approve executive session minutes of December sixth, two thousand twenty-two, regular council meeting.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve executive session minutes of December sixth, two thousand twenty-two, regular council meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Yes.
Online voting has closed. The motion passes with five yays and two abstains. The two abstain with Councilmember Martinez and Councilmember Gardner.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, the next thing on our agenda is to approve some executive session minutes for December twentieth. Councilman Gardner?
Move to approve executive minutes of December twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, regular council meeting. Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve the executive session minutes of December twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, regular council meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Yes.
Online voting has closed. The motion passes with seven yays.
All right. Thank you. Now, I think we'll, we'll take a fifteen-minute break before the next item, which will be the oath of office for the council members. Councilman?
Ruth, I apologize. Before, before this goes, um, on the approval of the, and I'm, I'm, I don't know if this is legal, so I'm asking Wendy if we can do this. On the approval for the minutes of November first, um, they ended up not failing. I voted no on those. It's a very small discrepancy on the reason why I voted no.
No, sir, it'll just, it'll just be noted, the, the minutes will still be noted as they are.
Just leave it alone?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then I leave it alone. Continue on, I'm sorry.
No, thank you for checking. Thank you for checking, that's fine.
I apologize. Thank you.
Some of this stuff is very confusing.
It is, yes.
So, right now, I'll, I'll, we'll come back at nine o'clock.
I was just gonna say. What? No, 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 that was finished. I didn't, I actually didn't realize that three people were excused from that. So, to be honest with you, I just assumed. I would bet money that you were present during your partial part, that I had the concern. I don't know how to phrase it, but I don't, yeah, without verifying that you were part of that, I would hate to say. But it just was a, just a, just a little minor discrepancy. I don't know what else to say. Yeah?
Thank you for coming. Before we do the.
I don't know what's going on. I don't know what's going on, so. But, I mean, it's so true. So, if you go sit down, I'll come out and, and watch you.
Thank you so much. Excuse me, here, sorry. It was very comfortable. It's this guy down here. But if you hear too much, I think it's like, well, why is it? Well, I thought it was that looking better. Maybe it was just. I've never seen him get so scared of somebody else. Yeah. Oh, no. I think.
They work. I'm not even just gonna push down. No, it's not funny. I'm sure. They're in cars and then it's like.
I'm Jacqueline Wells.
Hi, Carol.
Hello.
How are you? Hi, guy.
How you doing, man?
Oh, that happens.
Forty years ago, eventually it's gonna end. Well, I enjoyed it. I enjoyed the different colors. I didn't like the tears. And if you're a safe person, sorry, but when you're a real person, it's real simple. I almost talked to this guy right here. He'd gone all the time to stop the school. He tried to turn around and chase him. And I agree with him, so I wouldn't change it. I have six other members that read this. I live, right? No. I'm not holding that one. Somebody who has a really good book, can touch it. It's a good or a bad, it's a good one. It's not enforced. But all we do as councils is vote on the order. It's all right, we don't enforce it. That's what happens. And you gotta know the rules. Put this here behind you. Yeah. Hey, amigo, how are you, sir? So. Exactly what I. It's one to us to listen to. So, I, I was happy how it all, all it basically seemed to be. I have a right to judge, and that's good. That's what everybody does. And that's what I was just talking to this morning. Just about the right to judge, and that's good. That's what everybody does. And that's what I was just talking to this morning. So, you don't allow it to go and just try to change it. Well, sometimes you give your fault, yeah, but you fall, you can do that with your fault. Then you file a complaint with your, through the council, or through a lawyer. It's weird. So, I, then people think, oh, this is a miserable place to be. Oh, I'd be lucky. I like the people, I like to miss my friends. I like to, I miss the conversations, I miss the disagreements, provided we do it right. We don't have to play a judge on our show. Facebook and commentary. What happens? And then another problem I think was in that person. Documentation. Which can be when I first got on the floor. If we, two or three years, then we're ready to talk. If we had two or three years that we were wanting to challenge each other to answer. To examine the members, that showed on the minutes what they said. So that when we do have that discussion, we have people to show.
Today around, I'm happy. You never know what happens in life. Oh my God, it was tough too. Have you been keeping busy?
Yeah.
I don't blame you. I don't blame you. I did, and I still, still believe me. I got stuck right in my driveway.
Whatever business is.
My driveway's guys.
We have fun.
I got out there and that was it. Started spinning. Exactly, thank you for everything.
It's my gun. You much fun? Alright, peace out.
Mike, would, would you tell the other councilors we're ready to go? Do you mind? Thank you so much.
Go to bed.
I'm gonna let you guys speak first while we do that.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
That's good, yeah. Get it ordered away. Then, then we'll step down.
Well, they're in my life. Yeah, and they'll come up and then we'll go to executive session.
Okay.
I'm not stealing this one.
Sure.
Uh, yeah, you, yeah. There we go again. Thank you. It'll taste cherry forever.
Yeah, he likes it.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is to issue the oath of office, but I, I told, I would like to hear from our outgoing councilors and I will turn the floor over to you, Dabari.
Okay. Yeah, I want to just start out by saying I want to just make three statements. And the first one is I want to thank the people in Ward, Ward One that allowed me to stay on that council over half my life on this council floor. I've enjoyed every bit of it and the people were good with me. Secondly, I want to thank the staff, the staff that is always working hard to try to make it right. Sometimes it doesn't happen the way we want it, but that's part of this game. And thirdly, I'd like to congratulate the new council that are coming on, Mr. Seeloff, it'll take my place on Ward One and, and I wish him the best of luck. Thank you.
I'd like to turn the floor over now to Councilman Smith.
It has been my distinct honor to serve the residents of the city of Rawlins and also the great people of Ward Two for eight years now. We've got a great staff, we've got tons of projects that are moving in the right way. Six penny projects, we've got water issues that we're working on. And I want to say that we're moving forward on that and I'm very proud of everyone that has worked on those. And this, this council, even though they get scrappy once in a while, they have been wonderful and I've loved them and I've loved working with them. And I have to say to Tanya, that was one of the toughest things that anybody ever had to do and I admire you very much for doing it. So God bless you all and I'll be watching all of you and, and wishing you all the best. Thank you.
I would like to point out that Dabari did forty-four zero, forty years of service to our city as a councilperson and, and Linda did eight years. Forty years is a record for the state of Wyoming and I respect both of you tremendously. Thank you, Dabari. Thank you, Linda. Alright, next thing on our agenda is issuing the oath of office for our new council members. And I would like to thank Judge Stipe for filling in and, and coming because the city judge is snowed out. I believe you've had to be the pinch hitter before.
I have.
It is so appreciated, so thank you.
Absolutely. Well, it's really my pleasure to be able to come on a joyous occasion and swear in our new council people. It's really fantastic. I recognize that city government, while it is, sometimes can be scrappy and that you do end up occasionally hearing, you know, bad words being said, that at the same time that this is really the government closest to the people and that the work that the council people do, you know, it's practically, it's right there at volunteer work and so we really just need to recognize that these individuals have been duly elected and that they're coming before us now and gonna take their oath of office and get started on the council and see what good they are gonna be able to do and bring to our community. So to that end, we'll go ahead and first have Bruce Seeloff come forward.
So Mr. Seeloff, I'll have you right on your side and I'll have you, have you to the side here. If you could please raise your right hand. I state your name. Having been duly elected.
Been duly elected.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that I will support.
Solemnly swear and affirm that I will support.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wyoming.
And the Constitution of the state of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly violated.
That I have not knowingly violated.
Any law related to my election or appointment.
Any law related to my election or my appointment.
Or caused it to be done by others.
Or caused it to be done by others.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. Congratulations. You all swore in and ready to go.
I just offered it to Steve earlier.
Hey, my next, if I could have John, do you say, even though you have. Right hand raised. I.
I.
State your name.
Stephen Sanger.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey and defend.
I will support, obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wyoming.
And the Constitution of the state of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly violated.
That I have not knowingly violated.
Any law related to my election.
Any law related to my election.
Or appointment.
Or appointment.
Or caused it to be done by others.
Or caused it to be done by others.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Very good.
Alright, Mr. Sanger, you can have your seat back. You got your chair back. I told you I'd give it back to you.
Do you want that five dollars now?
The right arm's broke, but.
I'm sending it to. That could be a problem.
You spelled right?
Alright, and then if you get reelected, Ms. Jacqueline Welster come down. Alright, you're going to raise your right hand. I, Jacqueline Welster, excuse me, I state your name. Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey and defend.
That I will support, obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wyoming.
And the Constitution of the state of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly violated.
That I have not knowingly violated.
Any law related to my election or appointment.
Law related to my election or appointment.
Or caused it to be done by others.
Or caused it to be done by others.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Both of them, right?
Yes. Alright, looks like you've got your official new council.
Alright. Well, thank you Judge Stipe, I certainly appreciate you and thank you for coming out on such a beautiful evening. And doing this for us. Thank you. And I would like to say to the new council, congratulations and thank you for putting yourself out there and you got a lot of work to do. Alright, so the next thing on our agenda is an executive session and I will call on Vice Mayor Wells.
I move to go into executive session at nine sixteen PM per Wyoming statute sixteen four four oh five to consider or receive any information classified as confidential by law and to consider the appointment, employment, right to practice or dismissal of a public officer, professional person or employee or to hear complaints or charges brought against an employee, professional person or officer unless the employee, professional person or officer requests a public hearing. The governing body may exclude from any public or private hearing during the examination of a witness, any or all other witnesses in this matter being investigated. Following the hearing or executive session, the governing body may deliberate on its decision in executive session.
Second. There's been a motion made and seconded to go into executive session at nine sixteen PM. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open and for you two gentlemen, just go ahead and say.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, online voting has closed and motion passes with six yeas.
Alrighty, thank you.
You can go fix it.
She's like waiting.
Yeah. You know, it's the same.
Okay, Vice Merewell?
I move to come out of executive session at 9:48 PM per Wyoming statute 16-405.
Seconded. And a motion made and seconded to come out of executive session at 9:48 PM per Wyoming statute 16-4-405.
Yes.
Online voting has closed. A motion passes with six yeas.
All right, thank you. Was there any objections for matters discussed in executive session? Seeing none, we will move on to appointment of the mayor. I would take nominations. Councilman Garner.
Okay. If I mess this up, I'm sorry. I move to appoint Jaclyn Wells to serve as the City of Rawlins mayor for the January 2023 through January 2025 term.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded to appoint, to serve as City of Rawlins mayor for January 2023 through January 2025 term.
All right, wording on that for appoint or nominate?
Nominate.
Nominate.
Should be a nominate, not a.
Okay.
We don't need to amend, right?
No.
Are we all done? Or can we continue on?
No, you have to hold on one second. So the motion was to appoint Jaclyn Wells to serve as mayor for January 2023 through January 2025 term. There was two yeas and there was four nays. The motion fails.
All right, I will take another nomination at this time. Councilman Sanger. Good. Councilman Steve.
Sorry. Thank you. I would like to nominate Terry Wykem to be, continue on as the mayor of the City of Rawlins.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to nominate myself as City of Rawlins mayor for January 2023 through January 2025 term.
The motion is to appoint Terry Wykem to serve as the City of Rawlins mayor for the term of January 2023 through January 2025. There were four yeas and two nays. The motion passes.
Right, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right, the next thing on our agenda is to nominate somebody for vice mayor. Vice Mayor Wells.
I move to appoint Darryl Garner to serve as City of Rawlins vice mayor for the January 2023 through January 2025 term.
I'll second it.
Been a motion made and seconded to nominate Darryl Garner to serve as City of Rawlins vice mayor for the January 2023 through January 2025 term.
The motion reads to appoint Darryl Gardner to serve as City of Rawlins vice mayor for the term of January 2023 through January 2025. There were three yeas and three nays. The motion passes, correct me.
Motion fails.
Fails. The motion fails.
Okay, I guess we'll do it again. Is there a, somebody want to make a nomination for vice mayor?
Make a motion to nominate Steve Sanger. Councilman Sanger as vice mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to nominate Councilman Sanger to serve as City of Rawlins vice mayor for the January 2023 through January 2025 term.
The motion reads to appoint Steve Sanger to serve as the City of Rawlins vice mayor for the term of January 2023 through January 2025. There was four yeas and two nays. The motion passes.
All right, thank you. Next thing on our agenda is appointment of Carbon County Council of Governments voting delegate. Some would accept a motion for nomination? Vice Mayor Wells.
I move to appoint Terry Wykem as the mayor, Terry Wykem, as the Rawlins City Council representative and the voting delegate to the Carbon County Council of Governments for the January 2023 through January 2024 term.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to appoint myself as the Rawlins City Council representative and voting delegate to the Carbon County Council of Governments for the January 2023 through December 2024 term. Are we going to vote on this or just open online voting? Or what do we do there?
It needs to be, this could be voted either orally or online.
Okay. Go ahead and open online voting, please. Those that have computers.
Hold on one second.
You, 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 you.
Two seconded, do you know?
I do.
Ruth, thank you. So online voting is open.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Online voting has closed. A motion passes with six yeas.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is to nominate somebody for the Board of Adjustments. Vice Mayor Wells had her hand up first.
I move to appoint Councilmember Seeloff as the Rawlins City Council representative to the Board of Adjustments for the term January 2023 through December 2024 term.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Been a motion made and seconded to nominate Councilman Seeloff as the Rawlins City Council representative and voting delegate to the Carbon County, wait a minute, what am I doing? I'm under law law. Okay. There's been a motion made and seconded to appoint Councilman Seeloff as a Rawlins City Council representative. No, I'm still off.
Got one more.
Board of Adjustments.
The Department of City of Rawlins Board of Adjustments.
G.
G.
Okay. To appoint, I'm sorry, Councilman Seeloff to the City of Rawlins Board of Adjustments as the City Council representative for the term January 2023 through December 2024 term. Any discussion? Okay, I see online open, is open. I'm sorry, I screwed that all up.
It's okay.
Yes.
Online voting has closed. The motion passes with six yeas.
All right, thank you. The next thing is to appoint somebody to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Councilman Garner.
I move to appoint Councilman Weisenberg as the Rawlins City Council representative to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the, for the January 3, 2023 through December 31, 2024 term.
Second it.
Been a motion made and seconded to appoint Councilman Weisenberg as a Rawlins City Council representative to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the January 3, 2023 through December 31, 2024 term. Is there any discussion? Please open online voting.
So, Darryl, Darryl. Thank you for bearing word. The online voting is open.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
No, that's why I'm like, January 2024. It'll only be a one-year term. That's.
It's December.
Is it December?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So it is two years at that point then.
Online voting has closed. The motion passes with six yeas.
Makes sense now.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is to appoint Urban Systems Committee person, Councilman Weisenberg.
I'd move to appoint Councilmember Gardner as a Rawlins City Council representative to the Urban Systems Committee for the term of January 2023 through December 2024.
Second it.
Been a motion made and seconded to appoint Councilman Garner as the Rawlins City Council representative to the Urban Systems Committee for the January 2023 through December 2024 term. Any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Online voting has closed. The motion passes with six yeas.
All right, thank you. Next thing on our agenda is to appoint somebody to the Rawlins Downtown Development Authority, Councilman Weisenberg.
I'd move to appoint Councilmember Sanger as the Rawlins City Council representative to the Downtown Development Authority for the term January 2023 through December 2024.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to appoint Councilman Sanger as the Rawlins City Council representative to the Downtown Development Authority for the term of January 2023 through December 2024 term. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, the next thing on our agenda is to appoint somebody to the LGLP. Vice Mayor Wells?
I move to, names, Councilmember Sanger, to the Local Government Liability Poll LGLP for the elected municipal position.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to appoint Councilman Sanger, member, to the Local Government Liability Pool for the elected municipal position. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Online voting has closed. The motion passes with six yeas.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our.
What's that? Can I speak about boards real fast?
Sure.
I just want the, I guess, everybody here to know that some of these board appointments are gonna vacate some seats on some of these boards now, knowing the seat, there'll be an open seat on the Board of Adjustments, open seat on the DDA. At that, I just encourage people to apply for those boards and join the city and help it out.
Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is to approve payroll and compliance pay. Vice Mayor Wells.
Move to approve the December 4, 2022 through December 17, 2022 payroll register for $330,467.94.
I'll second.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve the December 4, 2022 through December 17, 2022 payroll register for $330,467.94. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting has opened.
Yes.
Online voting has closed. The motion passes with six yeas.
With no further business to come before the council, I will call this meeting adjourned at 10:08. The next meeting will be January 17, 2023, right here at 7:30. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys.